Good evening. We welcome you all here tonight. We call to our regular meeting, West Valley City Council. We have a few items on our agenda tonight, but we'll begin with an opening ceremony post Tuesday. We only have four council members present, as noted in our previous meetings. Council members Titi Simaro, Christensen, and Lang are excused tonight. So with that then, we'll turn to Lars Nordfeld for our opening ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor. Will everyone please rise and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No scouts, it looks like. Of course, it's hard to tell sometimes. Of course, all of you look like them scouts to me just about. Not seen any of those here. Our minutes of September 3rd, we need a motion on the minutes.
May I move for approval of our September 3rd minutes?
Second. Seeing no comments, we'll put that to a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes of September 3rd, please say aye. If those votes say no, it passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we have our comment period. We have a couple of people who have signed up. Let's see. If you're here for the public hearing, we... Let's see, and we have two of those. The one on 2249 South, 1070 West, and then the other on the residential dwelling units. We will have separate public hearings on those. So if you're here to speak to those, I mean, you can still speak now, but if you want to speak to it more closely to when we're discussing that, you certainly can. That's kind of what we suggest. The ones that we're having now can be on any topic, so let's see. Then, just a reminder, in our public comment period, five minutes max. All comments addressed to the mayor. No, it's not question and answer. It's not a debate. It's your time to speak. We may or may not respond to that, and depending upon the comments, sometimes we may even add it to a future agenda, so we can discuss it. With that, it looks like Petro Weiniger?
I'll wait.
Okay. Marlo Springer?
Good evening, Mayor. I was just doing some research, going through previous council meetings and so forth, and I actually missed the meeting when the vote on the development plan for the apartments by Costco was voted on. But I was looking at the traffic study, and one of my major concerns with that development is the amount of extra traffic that's going to be there. And in Section 2, Background Conditions on the Traffic Study, Item B, it says, "The primary roadway that will provide access to the project site is described below: 3800 South," which is the east-west road on the south end of that development. "Is a city-maintained roadway, which is classified by the West Valley City General Plan Update 2015 as a minor arterial. The roadway has two travel lanes in each direction, separated by a center two-way left-turn lane. Posted speed limit is 35 miles per hour in the study area." Well, that road is not two travel lanes in each direction. It's a single lane in each direction. I'm not a traffic engineer, but as a driver, I do know that, what did they say, 1,200 extra trips per day is going to have a much bigger impact on a single-lane road each direction versus a double-lane road each direction. So in the future, it might be nice to pay a little more close attention to what the assumptions are going into a traffic study for something like that. Anyway, that just was a concern of mine. Let's see. With the elections coming up and the primaries already finished, I look back at some of the donors from this election, the primaries, and also previous elections, and I'm quite concerned about the number of donors that are actually non-voting. There are many donors that are individuals outside of the voting area, as well as other business entities. I just made a list here: Salt Lake Board of Realtors, Regan Outdoor Advertising, Central Utah Federation of Labor, American Institute of Architects, the Utah PAC, UA Local 140, which is plumbers and pipe fitters, and then Salt Lake Home Builders Association. And again, as I said, lots of individuals. There was a study done on statewide legislators that said roughly 6% of the donors were actually able to vote in the locations where the legislators are, and it was, the vast majority of money was from outside. And I'm just concerned that's going to happen at the city level as well. So it would be nice to have some... I don't know if it's possible to limit that, or it's nice just to be aware of those kinds of things. And I know on the agenda tonight, there's a resolution about the change in the plans for the development in the old Kmart lot on 4100 South Redwood Road. They've changed several things about there, and obviously you've had discussions on that. My biggest concern are the actual sizes of the apartments. So the one-bedrooms have gone down from 800 square feet to 675, which is a 16% decrease in size. The two-bedrooms from 1,100 to 937, which is a 15% decrease in size, and then the three-bedrooms from 1,300 to 1,158, which is an 11% decrease in size. So it's just a concern to me that we've taken out so much space on those apartments. And the other thing is the removal of the vaulted ceilings on the upper floors of those. So I would suggest maybe they need to go back and look at some of the details on that again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Daryl Curtis.
Also on that same development there on 41st, where the Kmart property is, the concern that I have and several of my neighbors and associates is the multifamily dwellings that are going on there and in other areas of the city. Where I live out at 5600 West and over by Winco, 3100 South, there is a big complex of apartments. The apartments already, even though they're less than a decade old, are already starting to get rundown. My son-in-law worked there as a maintenance guy, and within the first year, they had to replace half of the air conditioning units because of poor and shoddy work. So the concern I have with multifamily dwellings like this is the same thing. It's going to change management, you're going to have other problems, and then we're just going to perpetuate the problem that we already have. And would like to have the council and other builders to consider, if you're going to do a multifamily or multi-resident housing, that'd be condos or something like that, and then limit the number of condos that can be rented. Over behind Smith's on 4100 South and 56 West, there are some townhomes there, and I don't think any of those townhomes are owned by any of the residents that live there. They're all rentals. And where I live, a lot of the people call that Crack Alley. So my point and my concern is, is if we just turn a lot of places into rentals, whether it be apartments, or townhomes, or even homes, that we lose the prominence of our community, and we create more of a transient community than what we currently have. So I would just like to bring that to the council's attention, to you, Mayor, to look for that in the future, to take that into consideration, that if it is a condo, that I understand the need for maybe some high-density housing, but at the same time, it needs to be wise and not just, let's just put an apartment there. With this apartment building going over by Costco, I voiced my concern at that point. Concerned about making that more of a commercial area instead of residential. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in our public comment period? Seeing no other comments, then we'll close the public comment period. Come back to our city manager. Any comments, Mr. By?
None tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the council? Okay, looking over what was brought up. There was the traffic report that there were some concerns about, but that'll be dealt with since that's going to be an issue that we'll be discussing. Campaign donations, that hasn't come up really much. I don't think I've heard that one for a long time, but I'm not sure that's one that... While you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm not going to put that on a future agenda item. I would think that if we're going to do that, we would want to do it not in the middle of a campaign season. I think that you need to keep the same rules during that period of time. Be happy to bring that up, you know, like next year. But you can tell me if that's... I just hate to change rules in the middle of something. Then, multiple-family dwellings, actually, we are going to be discussing that on our agenda, or I guess I should refer to probably high-density housing. I think that's what it was being referred to. So that'll probably be included in when we have those discussions. So I don't see anything that we would put on our agenda for the future, but a couple of those we are going to be talking about anyway. Okay. Then, having gone through that, next we have our public hearing. This is Item 7 on our agenda. This is application SA-6-2019 filed by Terry Wright. Final flat approval for a piece of property we're referring to as UTA AGC Minor Subdivision at 2249 South, 1070 West. In conjunction with that, we will consider ordinance 19-36. Associated General Contractors has a building there on 1070 West. The tracks run just north of there. UTA bought a piece of property, and apparently they've now sold that to Associated General Contractors, who will use it for another building, some training offices, et cetera. And so we'll be discussing that plan and how that will be set up. And I'm just... See if I got this right here. There we go. Two lots on 6.6 acres. Let's see, Lot 2 was not developed, it was used for a light rail corridor, and part of that was absorbed by the actual light rail line, but the north 1.5 acres was not needed and then sold to Associated General Contractors. Okay, so with that, there were some changes in the lot because of the trail, tracks, line, et cetera. So the issue before us is to look at that and determine if everything's okay there. So that is the issue before us. With that introduction, unless the council wants to add anything to that, sometimes I miss a few things, okay. We will open a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? None? Must be the next one. Okay. Seeing no public comment, I will close the public comment portion on this agenda item, and we'll bring it back to the council.
May I move for approval of ordinance 19-36?
Second. Any further comments? Now, this one was pretty routine, so then we turn to our city reporter to take our vocal vote.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Vigolo?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we go to application ZT-11-2019 filed by Petro Weiniger. This is zoning change to determine whether a property is eligible to be rezoned to RM, a multiple-unit dwelling residence zone. In conjunction with that, we will consider ordinance 19-37. That would amend those regulations. And so, let's see, this one is the one on Redwood Road, yes. For some reason, I didn't call that one up, so... Where is it? There we go. See anything that I need to mention on this? They wanted to modify that due to a problem with their original code, had said that if they had structures on it, it could be rezoned, but without having checked that thoroughly, the owner tore down the houses on it, which made it ineligible to be rezoned without modifying our criteria. And so they kind of looked at that. The conditions became effective November 17, 2015, and then they were changed after that, or the homes were torn down. It is currently Zone C2, but they want to change that to RM. So that is the introduction to the issue there. With that then, any other comments we ought to add on that? If not, then we'll open it to public comments. Is anyone here to speak to this issue?
Petro Weiniger, Chapman Richards. I am the real estate agent who is helping the owner sell the land, or in this case, requesting the zoning change. He's owned the land for about 10 years. The initial thought, of course, was that he would develop it, and then we ran into that '09 debacle and the funds dried up, and so that was the end of that. So now, fast forward to today, he is no longer in a position to be able to develop it himself, and we place the property on the market for sale as a C2. I have fielded probably some 500 phone calls, and the vast majority of those are builders, such as, for example, this one right here from Alpine Homes, who is interested in the property for the use of multi-homes. In this particular case, the builder, as in most of these phone calls, their vision is to build condos or townhomes. They're not looking at apartments, something in the range of a two or three bedrooms, two bathrooms, one and a half. They'd like for them to be owner-occupied. That's what these guys specialize in. So given the nature of the situation, that yes, there were homes on there, they were, in a word, ugly. And with the guidance of West Valley City, the owner was given an option of either attempting to rehabilitate those homes or to flatten them. And, well, the sentence, good money after bad, the homes were just far too dilapidated to try to reinvigorate them, coupled with the fact that the nature of Redwood Road today is so very different than it was in 1950, back when those homes were purchased. It just didn't make any sense to have residential homes there. So the decision was made to flatten the homes. Now, fast forward to today, we want to sell them, and we learned that, oh, whoops, had we hung on to them just for a little bit longer, we wouldn't be in this situation, right? Because the zoning stipulates, if you have homes on there now and you're under two acres, you're good to go on multi-housing, at least to be able to apply. But given the fact that we flattened them, we don't even have the option of applying. So we are humbly asking today that we are permitted to have the option, at least of being able to apply for multi-housing. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak to this issue? Seeing no other comments, we will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the council. Councilman Buehler?
I have a couple of comments I'd like to make, Mayor. I realize that on this application, there's some unfortunate timing. I have a concern, though, that we may tonight amend the ordinance text so that an application could be made, and by doing so, give a false hope that such an application would be approved. We have on our agenda next week the possibility of a moratorium on RM zoning statute changes, ordinance changes, so that we can take a look at our city as a whole, and step back and take a look at what RM zoning we would allow, where, what conditions, and so forth, because we have been getting quite a few of these applications now and different changes, and want to have the opportunity to look at things as a whole instead of one by one by one as we go through these next several months, and be more, I think, organized and have better vision, cumulative vision of what RM zoning would be in the city, and that that would in turn help the developers know what would be required of them, and so forth. And I'm wondering if maybe we shouldn't continue this as well, so that it could be addressed after we have done our major work in looking at the RM zoning and ordinance changes. Any other comments?
And I think I would add to that, you know, what I've mentioned before, at some point, you know, this issue of where we're increasing the density, depending upon how many we get. It seemed like we just got several of them just right in a row. And try and have a look at that to see if, first of all, should any change to our policy be made, or should we continue that for the foreseeable future? Second is, if we do change it, what impact will that have on development in the future? The advantage, we, I mean, we look at Salt Lake City, Salt Lake is building up, but of course, they have large, wide streets, very different from the way that streets were planted out here, and in many cases, our streets cannot accommodate more than two travel lanes, a center turn lane. And they've become some of our almost major arteries in the city. And so at what point does the development overwhelm that? And I'm not saying we're there yet. What I'm saying is, at what point should we consider those changes? So just given that this is all coming to kind of a head, I think I support, you know, continuing that, till we kind of get a feel, and this is something that we do want to address here in the near future. We won't be able to do it the next couple of weeks. And especially given as well that we have three council members absent. We are for them, but we miss them when they're not here. So with that, still in the council's hands.
I'll move that the action on ordinance 19-37 be continued without date.
Second. Any further comments? In case you haven't been to our council meeting before, this is the second time we've addressed this. We have a study meeting that we addressed these and had lots of questions last week. Anyway, with that then, seeing no further comments, to our city reporter. Now, let's see. To continue, a yes vote is to continue it to an uncertain date.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
And Mayor Vigolo?
Aye.
Motion for continuance is approved.
Okay. Next, we go to resolutions. We have Resolution 19-117 to authorize the execution of amendment to a development agreement with State West Valley City for property at approximately 1776 West, 4100 South. This particular property, and we affectionately refer to it as the old Kmart property, Kmart was there for a long time on that northwest corner of Redwood Road and 4100 South, where it sat vacant for a long time. A development agreement was entered into, and the council approved that in the past. A proposal came forward to modify that fairly significantly with a number of issues, and some of the documentation attached to our agenda items highlights some of those issues. And staff even did a comparison to kind of show what the changes were. Council had many questions on this, many concerns, and so that resolution is on our agenda. We have received from the State West Valley City LLC a request to continue that. And so that's the information before us with that introduction then to the council.
Now, I'd like to make a comment that this property is zoned RM, for high-density residential, and that we are not... There is no application to change the zoning. That's what it's zoned, that's what I expect will be built there. The question is whether it would be built under the development agreement that was approved in April 2018, the development agreement that's proposed now to be changed, or something different. That we are not considering a zone change to commercial or residential estate or anything else. It's zoned and the owner has a right to build high-density housing according to the development agreement that was already approved. But based upon their request for a continuance, I would move that this item be continued.
Second. Probably for us, any further comments? By continuing, I know we will be... We have three of our council members absent this week, two will be gone next week, so this, we're not putting a date on that. It'll be down the road a little ways to address. With that then, seeing no further comments, to our city reporter.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Vigolo?
Aye.
Motion for continuance is approved.
Okay. Next, we have Resolution 19-118. This is a contract with Great Western Installations for playground equipment at Peachwood Park. Specifically on this, this particular park is an older park. The playground equipment has suffered, I guess would be the right way to state that. And so they've decided that they would use this in replacing the playground equipment, that they would do some interesting things, including artificial ground turf. that they would do some interesting things, including artificial ground turf, all-inclusive playground equipment, which means that it is designed more for those who may not be able to utilize normal playground equipment, some children with special needs and so forth. Let's see, so it's 26 years old, I'm just looking down through here. Game Time was awarded to us, awarded to, excuse me, the contract was awarded to Game Time, and they agreed to discount a portion of that. And so currently, the cost that would take to install those is $171,351. And so that is an introduction to it. There'll be additional sidewalk paths, you know, a number of things. And attached to our agenda are certain details of that proposal. With that introduction, though, I will stop there and bring it to the council.
And we had quite a bit of discussion last week as to whether, I think that most of us would favor there being playground of this nature in the city that's accessible. We had quite a bit of discussion if this is the right place, if this is the right place to start, if this would be the norm going forward. And I don't really know the answers to all of those questions. I don't want to continue everything. So this could be a close vote, and if we had our three other council members here, it might still be a close vote. But I think that my confidence lies more or less with the Parks Department as to what to do where and when to do it. And I guess with that, I'll move for approval of resolution 19-118.
Property before us, and actually, I was one that raised a number of those questions. I do like the concept, and I am going to vote favorably, with the understanding that we will want to address, is this a plan for, as was discussed, all our parks? Should we identify certain parks where we would perhaps do even a little more at a centralized location or something like that? So I don't want the discussion to end, but if suddenly next month we get a second one, why opt to vote no, unless there's a little more of a plan brought forward to kind of clarify this and see where we're going. Because the off-handed statement almost last week was, we're going to do this in all the parks. And I thought, oh, because this is a very expensive way to do a park. And we, there are, depending on the park location, parks that suffer more than others. And this is pretty expensive playground equipment, and we say work and we put it where we can be assured that it will have a normal life and be able to be accessible to those who want to use it. So anyway, a lot of talk there, but, you know, I'm still going to vote for it. So any other comments to our city recorder?
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Next, we have resolution 19-119. This is a cost-sharing interlocal agreement between the city and Granger Hunter Improvement District on the reconstruction of 4100 South. Obviously, we've been doing a lot of work on that, and as we have worked with the Granger Hunter Improvement District on certain underground work, water lines, et cetera. There's, you know, a lot that would happen there. This was reviewed, there are some changes on the allocation of costs between the two entities was discussed and agreed to, and so we ended up with some modifications there, and this particular resolution will authorize those changes and support them. And things are moving forward, and I'm much looking forward to it all getting completed whenever that point arrives. And since I have to cross it, and I try not to drive down it on that section, because it is in, it is in much need of improvement. That's definitely true. And Act Larsch probably gets an opportunity, you're over close by there, to drive that.
It'd be nice when it's fixed.
Yes, we're all looking forward to, as are many of our residents. And given the traffic backing up there, that was a four-lane road for most of the way, and so it's down to two lanes, so it's having an impact. With that introduction to the project, then, to the council.
I move forward for approval of resolution 19-119.
And I'd like to note that Granger Hunter's agreed to participation is $767,687.42. It's substantial here. And without a second motion to approve.
Any further comments? Seeing none to our city recorder.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Next, we go to resolution 19-120. This is change order number one on a contract with Acme Construction for the Market Street Reconstruction Project. They are doing some work there, but after getting started on it, it was determined that some additional work beyond the scope of the original contract would best be done now while that's being worked on. And this would increase the amount of damaged concrete panel replacements, the existing storm drain box and some miscellaneous curb and gutter replacement. And in our projects, we always have a contract bid, and that is the amount we approve, but we also authorize them a certain amount in addition to cover, you know, contingencies. Usually, that never exceeds about approximately 10% normally won't be tried and put there. So they don't have to come back for every little item that they uncover. But in this case, it exceeded it. They looked at it, and the city agreed that there needed to be some additional work. So this particular modification of $42,575 was deemed appropriate and is before us. That is the proposal with that introduction to the council.
I move for approval of resolution 19-120.
Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none to our city recorder.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have resolution 19-121. This is toward a contract to Acme Construction for the construction of the 2700 West Improvement Project. This case, this wasn't already bid out, but there were seven bids received. Lowest responsible bidder was Acme Construction. The fiscal impact, $2,910,000. 1.5 million of that coming from Salt Lake County Transportation Funds, the rest from our Class C road funds, transportation sales tax. Those, except for the transportation sales tax, Class C road funds are the taxes on gasoline, the portion that comes to our city for utilization. And so on 2700 West, we'll build an eight-foot concrete wall along a portion of between 4100 South and 3650 South, replacing the fitting storm drain components of that, an asphalt pavement overlay between 3500 South, 4100 South, so that bicycle lanes will, buffered bicycle lanes will be added to the roadway. Let's see, I think that's everything. That's the introduction to it. To the council.
I move for approval of resolution 19-121.
Second. Properly before us, any further comments?
Excited to see it happen.
This one has been talked about for years, and I know it was before I came on the council five years, five-plus years ago. And so fun to have it actually finally come to fruition. With that then, seeing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Buehler.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay. With that then, that's our regular agenda concluded. Any final comments from the council before we adjourn? Let's see, maybe since many people listen to this, there is a meet-the-candidate night sponsored by Chamber West for our city council races to be held at Utah Trucking Association offices just off Bangater Highway and the 201, right there in the northwest area. And that's on, what's the date on that?
October 17.
October 17, at 7:00 PM, was it?
6:00 PM.
Excuse me. Make sure that's clear, 6:00 PM. Okay. Just thought many of our citizens would be interested in that, to be able to meet candidates. So with that then, anything else? If not?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of a adjourn? Please say aye.
Aye.
Or say no, as a unanimous vote, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.